I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for May 23rd, 2017. May have a roll call, please. Eileen.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mr. Novat.
Here.
Mrs. Levert.
Here.
Mrs. Sands.
Here.
Dr. Lemke.
Here.
Mr. Burkowski.
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Welcome and thanks all for coming. In our district vision statement, we have six milestones which help us keep track of if we're making progress towards that vision. Flowing from those milestones is the district strategic plan which details how administration and staff are actually going to achieve the milestones that lead us to that vision. The third milestone is assessment and it reads, "Multi-dimensional assessments are used to identify and measure holistic growth for every student." In the strategic plan, one of the initiatives associated with this milestone states, "All District 67 employees," I'm sorry, "all District 67 students will have a personalized learning profile identifying both academic and social competencies." I'm extremely pleased to report that our administrative team, led by Rebecca Jenkins and Susan Millsk, have been hard at work on this initiative and they are indeed making good on that objective. Throughout this school year, teams of teachers have been meeting regularly to discuss the relative strengths and developmental needs of each of our students on an individual student basis. This is markedly different than the teach-to-the-average, or worse yet, teach-to-the-lowest-common-denominator philosophy that existed in many schools that many of us attended in our youth. More and more objective data is being used in these discussions, complementing our teachers' observations and experiences with each student. As a district, we're now moving to the next step in that process as we begin to add external reporting to parents alongside the internal staff conversations that already occur. This is both an exciting and somewhat scary proposition. As our district truly is on the forefront of implementing this innovative philosophy, there are not many best practices to follow or tried-and-true ways to do this. We are, to a large extent, inventing this, and that means we might not get it right the first time, and that's okay. I strongly believe in this personalized learning model. We've heard from years that every child is different, as parents were told not to compare our kids, and on and on, and now the world of education is catching up and District 67 is leading the way. At the end of this school year, every parent will receive instructions explaining how to access their student's online personalized learning profile, in addition to receiving the more traditional report card. This personalized learning profile will not only contain a student's grades, test scores, and attendance, but it will contain other important information such as extracurricular activities, service hours, and a section that looks at engagement. The goal for the personalized learning profile is to paint a holistic picture of the student instead of simply reducing the student down to one number or a few numbers. This is a big step towards that goal. Is the personalized learning profile that we'll be sending out perfect? No, far from it. It's more like a beta-test version or a version 1.0 with many more iterations to come. It's a work in progress, and yet we are releasing it to our parent community. Along with this version one of the personalized learning plan will be a survey asking for feedback as we immediately begin the process of improving it. And that is why I am especially proud of Rebecca and Susan. We teach our students to take risks and to be okay with achieving less than perfection, but then far too often, we don't take our own teaching to heart. In this case, Rebecca and Susan definitely have stepped out of their comfort zones. They're sending parents a report they know is not the polished, finished product that has as many questions as it has answers. And tonight, I want to recognize and celebrate that risk-taking. It's through those imperfections that we move forward. It's through having a version one that we achieve a version two and version three. Lacking the courage to send out an imperfect product, we would be stuck and not achieve the strategic plan's initiative, delaying progress towards our vision. I hope our administration, our staff, our teachers, and most certainly our students see this for what it is. A great step forward towards achieving our vision and a fantastic example of what risk-taking looks like. I hope parents acknowledge this too, especially when they don't get the precise answers they want about the personalized learning plan. From their constructive feedback, we'll end up with a version two and a version three. The personalized learning plan will improve with each iteration. As I recently explained to a group of Boy Scouts, Thomas Edison tried over 3,000 different filaments before he invented what we now know as the light bulb. While I'm confident that it won't take us 3,000 iterations to get this right, it certainly will take us more than one. So, well done Rebecca, who's not here tonight, well done Susan, and well done to all the staff that were involved in this product, project. Keep up the good work and please keep pushing yourselves a little beyond your comfort zone. We're relying on that to achieve our vision. And in recognition of the risk-taking, I've left one of these for Rebecca as well, but Susan, come on up, we have a thank you pen.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
We do not have a superintendent's report tonight, so we move to public participation. If there's any member of the public that would like to address the board, please approach the podium, say your name and address. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Sakaja. I live at 1850 Suri Lane. I have two children at Cherokee School, and I am also the APT president at Cherokee. I'm here tonight because I was very excited that you were going to be voting tonight on whether to replace the playground at Cherokee, and I learned about an hour ago that that is not going to be on the agenda, and when I looked at the agenda tonight, I do not see that on there. So, I'm just wondering if you could give an explanation about what is happening with replacement of the playground at Cherokee.
Thank you. So, you'll like half of what I'm saying and you won't like half. As a rule, public participation is to give the board input, and when people ask questions, we take them and I assure you, you will get an answer. We don't answer people directly during public participation. Normally, I would point to Mike Simic, who sits there, and say, "Could you please make sure she gets an answer?" He's not here, but I will send out an email and someone from the admin, whether that be Rebecca, Susan, Jennifer, you will get an answer to your question. There is an answer, but we just don't make, we don't make that a practice to answer.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yep.
Can I give some input?
You may.
We have 309 students at Cherokee who are very excited about the prospect of a new playground. I know that you're all aware of how eager they are and their parents to have that replaced, to have a safer playground in place. So, I hope that, moving forward, that stays on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie. Jen, can I make sure, can I ask you to make sure that Julie gets an answer? Thank you. Okay. We now move to reports. Our first report, our only report of the night, is Emotional Wellness, the CSCI report, Ingrid and Amelia. If I said that right, if I said it wrong, I'm sorry.
Emily.
Emily, sorry. And tonight, we're actually not, the entire report's in the board packet, and we're not going to go through the report. We've all had a chance to look at it and it's out there for the public, we're going to dive right into Q and A directly. So, the floor is open for board members to ask questions on the CSCI Emotional Wellness report.
Well, I was, when I was looking through the report, and overall, it looks great. I mean, I think across most stakeholder groups, our results improved, albeit slightly in most cases, but it did show improvement over last year. So, the work that's been going on to address what were some issues last year has obviously borne some fruit, so thank you for that. We still appear to be down in social emotional security and social media, which I believe were the two areas of opportunity last year as well, and you may talk a little bit about what you're doing in those areas. My one question though, relative to the staff feedback, in, and I'm trying to find, I believe it was in professional relationships, that was lower than it was in the prior year, and when I went and looked at the detail behind that, it appeared to be driven by some low scores coming out of Sheridan School. Are there any issues or opportunities regarding relationships that we need to be addressing or need to be addressed?
Um, no. One of the things that we do with the survey results is we release them to school teams, and so our leadership team has looked at it. Each individual school has examined it in staff meetings with their principal, and then some of their stakeholder groups within the setting look at that. So, each school will be drilling down and doing some more focused questions for staff about professional relationships, and we'll ask questions like, "Are we onboarding new personnel? Do they feel integrated?" We have a lot of young staff members, so we want to make sure that they're well-integrated and feeling like the fabric of the school community, and then we'll look at, "Do our teachers under some types of stress or things that we could help them with, that we can reach out to them and provide a network?" Like, our emotional wellness committees do a lot of work along those lines. So, each school will be drilling down into the professional relationships to see if improvements need to be made.
So, they haven't had a chance to look at?
No.
And I should point out that even though that number was lower than the rest of the buildings, it was still high enough to be considered acceptable or positive, I guess.
Yes, still positive perception.
So, it's not like it's a negative perception per se, but it just showed a bit of a gap that brought the number down from prior years.
Yeah, and we always want to do the best work that we can, particularly to support teachers in the, in the work that they do. And Jeff, your takeaways were right in about all the positive results from the comprehensive school climate survey. We were very excited to see that of 34 dimensions that were assessed across the three stakeholder groups, that more positive perceptions were expressed in 25 of the 34 dimensions. So, we're really happy about that.
Looking at the responses, just a question, they basically, for the survey, say they'd like to see 80% of, 85, 80, 85% of students and staff reporting, and the staff numbers were low, and I don't recall how they were versus last year. Why is that?
Yeah.
And I would think that should be a lot higher. None of them hit 80.
I have a great answer for that. Our, let me try to explain. This year, we had 240 staff members complete it. Last year, we had 251. So, there was only a difference of 11 staff members, but the reporting, unfortunately, I think that some of the staff were double-reported at Deer Path because we disaggregated them to Deer Path East for the five and six, and West for seven, eight, and there were more staff that were counted double because this year, the CSCI reported that we have 52 more staff members than last year, which isn't the case. So, that was our, our oversight of reporting Deer Path numbers. So, had we, because we don't have 52 more staff members this year than we did last year. So, if we took, if we look at the reporting and took the number of total staff members for last year, we would have had 82%. So, we will be more diligent next year when we release personnel spreadsheets to the company to make sure that we've laid eyes on it and cross-referenced everything because some people were counted for Deer Path on each side.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it's really only a difference of 11 staff members over last year.
But that 82% would only be at Deer Path?
No, total.
No, but I'm just saying, the double-counting at Deer Path only affects the response rate at Deer Path.
And we've got, like, low, I mean Sheridan's at...
Well, yeah, so you still would have 58% at Sheridan and 66% at...
58% and Cherokee's at 74 and Everett's at 66, so it doesn't...
It was variable by staff, but I know that we, we saw that some people were counted double, but we, you know, we will work with principals also to provide opportunities for staff to do the surveys, to give them that time.
Why is it not 100%?
Well, they're anonymous, so you can't always tell, or you can't ever tell when somebody has completed them. We encourage them, we carve out time at staff meetings in a lot of buildings for them to do that, give them some planning time or Monday early release time, but we can't...
So, all of that, all of those are great answers, but all of those lead me to say the percentage at every building should be well over 90%, if not 100. You're doing it at staff meetings, you're giving them planning time. I don't, double-counting simply is saying that the numbers are inflated.
Yeah.
My question is, why are they not literally very close to 100%? I don't understand.
It was, it was, right. I, I agree with you, Mike. We should have a higher rating for that.
Are there, are there any kind of trust issues or concerns that they're going to know who I am even though it's quote-unquote anonymous?
Just because I've been on both, yeah, as a staff member teacher. There were, when we first started this survey three years ago, because we were told it was anonymous, but then when you started to take the survey, it asked, "What do you teach? How many years have you been in the district?" And as you know, some of our schools, such as Sheridan, that are so small, there's only one person in that position, and so we had feedback from staff members that, "How anonymous is this?" When they're asking all of those questions. And so, we felt that the following year, we made sure to say, "Look, this really is anonymous. We are not using this data for anything more than to see the answers to the questions." And then it was, "Well, then, why are you asking all of that?" And really, the CSCI, that's just the way that they format, and so, to answer your question, I do think some staff members don't take the survey because they do think that it can be routed back to them, so...
Well, I, I think the challenge then is how can we make informed decisions about staff and what we may or may not need to be doing for staff? I mean, we have a lower percentage of staff participation than student participation, so we can get more kids who might be absent to participate than our own staff, and so, I mean, it would seem to me that we need to think hard about how we're providing this survey to our staff, and if there are questions that we don't need them to answer, maybe the answer to people who are concerned about anonymity is just don't answer those questions. And then CSCI can't break it down by, like, teaching thing or whatever. There will be some less, fewer things that they can break it down by, but at least we'll have building-level information that's more accurate, I would think.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
And I assume the parents are always a struggle.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Mrs. Whipple is the one that works on that piece. We had 34%.
Our goal, this is something we did try to address creatively over the last couple of years because we really, really struggled two years ago. Last, two years ago, we could hardly make our numbers, and our goal for parents is 30%, so it's different than staff and students. So, what we did was offered the survey every other year because we felt like giving a year off. It's a long survey and a tedious survey. Giving a year off might boost our numbers, which we were pleased this year that it did boost the numbers to be within the compliant areas with a lot less effort to get parents to that level. We can watch the, the responses come in. The other thing we did was decouple it from the high school survey this year, so it wasn't at the same time. My recommendation for the future is do opposite years. So, say next year, we do 67, the following year, we do Lake Forest High School. So, even that breaking up, even though it was a month apart, you'd have Deer Path or elementary parents, and then you turn around and take it at the high school, and it's a very long survey. So, I feel really confident about the parent numbers, and I think we've hit our mark, and the parents have been good about responding. It was a labor of love two years ago. This year, it was not quite so hard to get everyone to respond.
Thank you.
But I will say, that's a good idea, because I'll be honest, after filling out the survey and having kids in both districts, I couldn't remember, I couldn't remember if I'd filled it out or not, and I kept getting reminders from both. I'm like, "Oh, wait a second, did I do that?"
How much does the survey cost the district?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the figure. It's rolled in with all of our survey costs. We can certainly get that to you.
I mean, it's...
Do you know off the top? I have it in my, in my...
I want to say, and I will double-check this and come back to you, I want to say it's close to $8,000, maybe nine, and we do split it between the two districts based on participation.
So, I have a litany of questions. So, first of all, in this category of what's negative, neutral, and positive, did you guys come up with that?
No, no, that's, that's based on their norms and their...
So, are they, what, what do their norms look like? They're saying that a third of the districts are in this range or that range, or are they just picking numbers? I'm just wondering, because they seem extremely low for any survey response to say that a 2.5 out of 5 is neutral is crazy. So, I'm just wondering, so they're the ones telling you that that's what we should expect? Okay, well, I'd push back on that. Next, we, this is the third year we've done it. We might as well report three years of data. Maybe CSCI doesn't want to do it, but we have the data, report it to us.
Okay, we have a slide that's three...
That's what, that's what we should see in our packet and on all of them, on all of them. That's what we should see in the packet.
We...
Okay? No, good enough.
Yeah.
Next question, are there numbers we're trying to drive? So, is our strategy, our objective, are there certain questions we're trying to drive over the years?
Yes.
Okay.
Obviously, our lowest for three years running has been in social emotional security, and so, we're working this year with an SEL task force. Previously, it was...
Can you speak up? I'm having a hard...
Yes. Previously, it was the SEL and then social and civic learning was also low, but if you look at those questions, they're really social emotional learning questions. So, what we've done this year is developed a task force, and we plan to implement district-wide social emotional learning in the, in our three-to-five-year plan.
But we sort of heard about that last year too, I think. So, here would be my suggestion. What I don't like about this is it tries to make us think everything at once, and what I would rather have us say is, "Okay, in these nine dimensions that we've been fine in for three years, we're still fine, and we're not even going to talk to you about it. And now, the two places we're trying to drive, that's what we're going to talk to you about." Because this other stuff, in fact, all the changes are within the margin of error, I imagine, and, which also raises the question of why are we doing this even every other year? Do it, we've done it twice, we know that we're low in these two categories, let's not give it for five years, and let's drive those two things, and then in five years, show that we've succeeded. Maybe it shouldn't be every five years, but one-year offs like this, those, those histograms, they're really not telling us anything other than we still have problems where we had problems.
There is, there is an obligation for school districts to regularly survey students and staff and stakeholders on climate and culture, so there is a mandate that we need to do that. There's a policy on that.
So, what does regularly mean?
Every other year at a minimum.
Okay, so that's fine.
And it has to be using an approved instrument.
Okay, so that's fine.
Five essentials or...
And so, getting back to these other comments earlier, does, does CSCI literally not allow us to take questions off?
It allows us to add questions if we want to tailor certain, target certain questions. If we do take it off, then it sort of skews the reporting, but they don't, they don't encourage it. They really want you to use the suite of questions that they have.
I'm not so, so we're really talking about what class do you teach and, you know, how long have you been here? The identifying questions, right? So, one thing we could do is we could tell all of our principals two things. We could tell them, "You don't get a raise next year if you don't have 95% response rates," and you too as well, and we're going to tell them, "Here are the 10 identifying questions. Tell all your people to mark the first one." We're never going to look at that, right? There's one graph in the whole report that talks about first-year teachers versus 20-year teachers, and in fact, I think that graph is useful, but it's, to Suzanne's point before, it's much more important to get 95% of the teachers saying what they think rather than knowing that the first-year teachers think everything's great and the 20-year-old teachers have a curmudgeon, right? Which is what we know. It's true. So, I just think there's, you've, we've got to find a way to drive response rates if we're giving this every two years, and without that, it, it's hard to know what we really should have our eye on.
For the staff, we've been giving it every year, but I, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I think the staff should have to do it every year, but I do understand their, their anonymity being protected. I just think we have to do it. Either CSCI can do that for us and stop asking them the questions, or have the principals just say, "Don't answer the questions," or "We're all going to answer the same question." I feel like I'm sitting here for the third year in a row being told those are our two problem areas.
Yeah. And we have, you know, and we have moved the needle on the social emotional security, and so, we feel like, you know, it's a five-point scale, but we are making ground even though our scores are relatively high compared to other districts. I think that our initiatives are working and we are gaining ground in those areas. We still have work to do, and we still have large initiatives that we're working on with all of our students.
One last quick point, and then I, I won't say another word, I promise.
Okay, Rob.
No, I will not. When we receive the data from them, do we actually see the number of fives and the number of fours and the number of threes, or do we just see this one overall number?
In the school, in individual school reports, they break down each question by how many...
Fives, fours, threes, twos, one.
By five, four, three, two, yeah.
Okay. So, I would actually encourage us to, that is actually important. So, if you've got a, you, you can have a score that's 4.2, and 80% are saying fours and 20% are saying fives, you have another one that's a 4.2, and 20% are saying ones or twos, and they're the introverted kid who's getting bullied every day, right? And so, we need to have our own analysis that's a little bit better. If, if we're getting significant ones, twos, or threes, it's not enough to say, "Well, the parents might be mad," or "The students might be upset." We have to find out which students aren't being served in those areas and go at that. If, if we're getting 4.2s and nobody's below a three, okay, that's fine, but I want us to make sure we're looking at that data. Looking at one average is not the right thing.
If you do look at the data, though, what it says is, for the two areas that we show improvement, it doesn't matter the grade level, it doesn't matter the ethnicity, it doesn't matter, everybody has those, they're their last two. Social emotional security and social media are the bottom for everything, parents, students...
But, but what I'm saying is...
My question would be, what is success in those two areas?
That, that should be defined as well.
Is a 3.2 actually pretty darn good when you look at how this is done across other schools that, that can, that do a similar survey? You might say, "You know what? Because of the ages we're dealing with, because of the issues you deal with in those two areas, wow, to get above a 3, 5, or a 4 is unheard of." Or, if there are schools that are doing that, we should be going to them and saying, "What are you doing?" So, we can model that and, you know, implement a best practice.
In March, I invited Nikki Singh to speak to the board for a number of reasons, both to show amazing students we have and fantastic resilience, and also to very clearly point out that we have issues at our school. We have people being bullied, and we have more people being bullied than are probably being reported. And so, while I understand Jeff's point on looking at national norms, I get that, and certainly, we need to do that, and that's important. There's another part of me, as I said in March, that I don't care that we're above average, and I don't care that we're doing better than WillMed or Glencoe. I care that our vision says every single student, and every single student isn't, doesn't have a safe, secure place. And, and so, I, I am troubled by three years running the same, the same situation, and I'm troubled that we have one student being bullied. What is your goal for this?
Our goal is definitely district-wide implementation of SEL, social emotional learning, so that we know that every student in every classroom and every teacher in the district has curriculum, uses the curriculum with fidelity, and we know that all of our students are getting the same research-based education and curriculum in social emotional learning, which we don't currently have, and so, this is something really, it's a pressing issue.
And I, I appreciate that, and I respect that, and please don't take what I'm about to say the wrong way. What I'm about to say is not realistic, but what you said is not my goal. Yes, we need to have a standard curriculum, and it needs to be out there for everyone. That is not my goal. My goal is that we do not have students being bullied.
Right.
My goal is zero.
Yeah.
And we may not reach that, but that's my goal.
And, and we share that common goal of that if it's one student who doesn't feel secure...
If that's your goal, you need to say it then.
...in their new environment, it's one too many, that we believe that every student that walks across our threshold in the morning should feel comfortable and confident and be able to go through their day feeling their best and being at their best and not having any type of, of conflict or, or be hassled in any way. We want them to be flourishing and growing in every area and feel a connectedness with their school environment and supported by everyone in their... their school environment and supported by everyone in their learning community, all students and all staff.
Can I add? And this just, it's not necessarily only in a curriculum or that a teacher would teach these skills. I think so much of it has to do with experiential. And this morning, myself, Katie Shire, and a bus full of 48 students from Deer Path Middle School East went to Little Fort Elementary School in Waukegan as a result of the family game night that was put on by Emotional Wellness and we took in a donation of a huge amount of books and, and cash donations as well. But we delivered summer reading bags to 456 students at Little Fort. And I'm not saying that braggadociously, I'm saying that because all day I have had the feeling and I know those students did as well. You can't buy that feeling, you can't teach that feeling. The only way that you will ever understand what it is, kindness, is the act of. And so my hope is also, when we're infusing this curriculum, we're offering our students these experiences where this is something that is not something that we're teaching from a, a board. This is something that we do, whether it's at another school, whether it's in our own school, or whether it's internationally.
And I don't want either of you to take my comments the wrong way. I think that we as a district under your leadership are doing great work. I think there are some things that have been said tonight, such as response rate, that's black and white. It should be above 95% and that is simply something that can be done. I'm not so incredibly naive to think that because we say so, that you can reduce bullying to zero. But it is easy to look at national norms and averages and feel good about it. And I certainly want you to feel good about your jobs. I just want you to know, my goal is zero and we're not there yet.
Yeah, but of the categories that we measure, I would suggest these two are possibly the two that can be least directly impacted by the school. This is incredibly driven by the family, the home, and the community. And so perhaps the call to arms here isn't so much, how do we improve things within our building, but how do we build relationships within the community to address this as an opportunity? Because, you know.
Social media especially. Social media especially.
You know, school connectedness, physical surroundings, that we can directly impact. And we have, but when you come to things like social emotional security and social media, so many other things enter into that, that to, to say that it's totally, you know, your responsibility to drive that number is probably not fair. But to Mike's point, are there ways that we need to think outside the box and outside the building relative to helping to drive that up? Perhaps that is fair of where our focus should be.
Parent awareness and information and community outreach, yeah.
But those, I think those are always going to be low. And that's why I think looking at national norms is at least instructive relative to expectations. As you get to say, well, yeah, all these should be at fives. But the reality is just based on ages and environments and, you know.
I totally agree that it all starts at home and it starts with parents and it certainly starts with the community. It's all of the above to your point, it includes the school. We as a school district have a policy in writing, we also have a philosophy in practice. And we as a school district completely control that philosophy. I'm not saying our philosophy is good, bad, or otherwise, but our philosophy impacts, it, it alone doesn't bring it to zero, but it's certainly, a, a philosophy of a school district can be much more of a zero tolerance philosophy or much more of a laissez-faire philosophy. And it certainly is going to impact how much bullying goes on in the school district. So I think an interesting question is, what is our philosophy in practice? Is it discipline? Is it, what's the word, reconstructive justice? I'm getting that term wrong. You know, there, there is a whole spectrum there. I don't think we're going to solve that tonight, but it's an interesting question of, of what is our philosophy on a building-by-building level for when bullying happens? Because it does happen and it generally doesn't come to the board. It generally is handled at the building level, so.
I think a lot of the social emotional learning targets are set to be preventative as opposed to reactive, but just teaching our kids how to handle emotions, relationships, everything that goes into being a good citizen of your building, of your community, so on and so forth.
And I agree with you that the education is a huge part of it. And I had this conversation two days ago with someone in our district, that it absolutely starts with education. When things happen, what then happens? What are the consequences? And this gets back to the philosophy question. You could have no consequences, you could have lots of consequences. And an argument could be made that under the justice model, consequences don't matter. They matter to the victim. I know that. They matter to the victim.
There's, so we do, you know, we do want to talk about preventative efforts and what we're doing to get ahead of students and really teaching them empathy building and responsible decision-making and things like that. And the philosophy of when a student does make a mistake or harms somebody or acts poorly, our, we're really embracing restorative justice practices. We also have the support through Senate Bill 100 that actually mandates that, that school districts do that. It's really restricted out-of-school suspensions and any exclusionary practices. They've really set a lot of parameters for school districts. And that's been in line with our thoughts, too, that we want to keep students in our fold and we want to use those opportunities to help them better understand what decision they made and what the consequence was, what were other choices that they had that they could have made that would have yielded better results. So it's really about teaching students a better way to cope and manage and express themselves. And so it's a teaching opportunity when a student is referred for discipline and we want to help that student understand better ways of operating in a social setting and preserving their dignity and making them still feel like a valued member of our community at the same time. And that we do believe in them and have faith in them, that they can turn this around. So it, it really needs to be a full 360-degree way that we handle those cases with a lot of tender care, because these are students who are, these are children who are growing and learning. And some students need more support in social emotional areas than others and we have to treat that, you know, positively and supportively.
And I 100% agree with that, Ingrid. The part that you didn't mention, that I'd like to hear something about, is helping the victim as well. Everything you just said as it relates to restorative justice had to do with the bully in that case. And what about the tender loving care for the victim?
Yeah, absolutely. That, that has to take place as well. We, we want to make sure that a person who has been harmed feels that they're in a protected and safe environment and that we care about their feelings and this is not acceptable for them to have been treated like that. And reinforce to them that we want to do everything we can to help them feel safe and protected and talk to them about what are strategies that they could employ, how could they get adult help, what would the adult help look like? And definitely partnering with the parents, too, so that the child can have a consistent message from those that love them and support them.
I have a question. Is there a policy at each of the schools on addressing bullying that both show what's done for the victim as well as the person who's doing the bullying?
There, yes, and we are very fortunate that we have social workers and psychologists in all of our schools. And they also will help to comfort somebody who has been the victim. Our principals and our assistant principals also meet with them and part of maybe, it could be that the person, depending on the situation, it's sometimes a little delicate. Sometimes if somebody's been wronged, they're open to hearing from the other person, receiving an apology or reparations of some kind. Other times, it's too delicate and we don't want to re-traumatize somebody, so that's not always the avenue. So there is somewhat of a case-by-case basis as well that has to come in with professional judgment. So we don't have a one-size-fits-all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, don't take my comments the wrong way. Keep up the good work. We just have a lot of work to do. Thank you. We now move to board committees. First up is the Board Education Committee chaired by Jeff Fulker.
The Education Committee has not met since our last meeting. I would like to recognize the Education Committee for the next two years. I will be chairing the committee along with Suzanne Sands and Alice Levert as members from the school board. We are in the process of interviewing community members for three additional positions on the committee. We've decided to move that up from two historically to three community members. And we've been very pleased and excited by the response that we've had from the community to join the committee for the next two years. We'll be conducting interviews next week. Myself, Suzanne, Susan Mills will be interviewing those candidates and hopefully we will have a committee in place by our next meeting. Obviously, we'll need to update our charter. We won't be doing that until we meet, which will be in the fall sometime, so that's where we stand.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions for the Ed Committee? Thank you. Moving on to the Board Finance and Operations, newly chaired by Tom Ford.
Thank you. Similar situation to Jeff, being new to this. We are also in the process of filling two seats that are open on the Finance Committee and we've had terrific response thus far. Last night, we had narrowed down to the, to the final group and we're still in the process of finalizing that. Feeling very, very big shoes by Dr. Lemke here and we're looking forward to, to fill in these spots. The, the talent level in this community is amazing and the hardest part is just trying to disseminate, you know, one over the other. It's ridiculous. So it's been a really good experience. And we do meet formally for the first time under my chairmanship on Monday, July 17th. Thank you.
Questions for Tom of the Finance Committee?
Actually, one quick question, reply. Richard Chun and Paul Darling stepped off the Finance Committee and I was, had the pleasure of serving with them for two years. They served for four years. Amazing job, tons of time. We want to thank them for, for all they did and for all they did for the community. So I'd be remiss not to say that. Bye.
Questions for Finance and Ops? Thanks, Tom. We move to Policy Committee, newly chaired by Kent Novit.
Opportunity to talk. We had no meetings, so I have no report, but I look forward to chairing committee with Jeff and Alice. Jeff with his experience and Alice with a different viewpoint. We do have our next meeting, I believe, on June 2nd. It's a joint policy meeting with District 115 at 8:00 in the morning and hope to have a report.
Thank you, Kent. Questions for Policy? Seeing none, we move on to the Compensation Committee chaired by Rob.
The Policy, Compensation Committee has not met.
Joint Shared Services Committee has not met, but we actually will be meeting in late June. Board Operating Procedures Committee, Jeff?
Board Operating Procedures Committee has not met since our last meeting. We still need to have another workshop to finalize the last three sections of the Procedures Manual. Hopefully, we'll get that done in July-ish, August?
Eileen, could you call, could you call me tomorrow and let's talk about scheduling that meeting? Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Questions for Board Operating Procedures? Thanks, Jeff. Move on to Liaison Reports, NSSCD, Suzanne.
The NSSCD Leadership Council met on May 10th. The Leadership Council had, in our continuing professional development of the month, the Nutria Region Superintendents came to give a presentation about what it is that they hope for it from NSSCD going forward. So this is a part of our pre-strategic planning process in educating the Leadership Council. And so the superintendents from that region shared that they are, Dr. Trisha Kakhanda from Winnetka, Dr. Steng from Sunset Ridge, Dr. Catherine Wang from Glencoe, and Dr. Paul Sally, the newly appointed superintendent of Nutria, were the superintendents that were in attendance. And they all spoke about the existing and emerging interests in their districts for support from the cooperative. Dr. Wang began the discussion by expressing appreciation on behalf of the group for the cooperative allowing them to gain a broader perspective across districts as well as for supporting the building of capacity within their districts to meet the needs of all students. She expressed the importance of allowing staff members and parents access to that same broader perspective. And she also discussed how each district looks to the cooperative to help broaden services within their districts. Dr. Kakhanda spoke to the district's interest in having NSSCD provide assessment of their district's strengths and challenges and also to get help in meeting their needs within their classrooms. Dr. Sally then addressed the region's interest in the importance of supporting all students' social, emotional, and mental health needs moving forward. And Dr. Steng spoke to the importance of having the cooperative for the economy of scale. As a small district, they cannot afford all the resources they need in professional development. He also spoke about the opportunities for NSSCD to further support districts in their professional development efforts in the areas of differentiation, universal design for learning, IEP writing, technology integration, paraprofessional training, the use of data to drive decision-making, English learners, and parent education. In closing, he expressed the group's hope that NSSCD will have the courage to push the member district superintendents into new directions and areas moving forward. We have one more region, the Northbrook Region is going to be coming at a future meeting to present their hopes and dreams, if you will. Then Dr. Schneider informed the council that NSSC, the NSSCD negotiations team had reached a tentative economic agreement with their district faculty association and the administration continues to meet with the Teaching Assistant Association in positive and collaborative discussions. He also reported that Mr. Eddie Chaz, our previous Leadership Council president, had agreed to continue the discussion with UPC Sanguin, or UCP, excuse me, Siguin regarding the purchase of the Rubeloff Building. And Dr. Schneider provided the council with a revised draft of the administrative organizational chart and reviewed progress in staffing some open administrative positions there. We then had a chance to have a discussion and a presentation from Dr. Linda Hansen, who has been hired to work on the strategic plan process with us. So she presented the process as it is developing and took back a lot of feedback from the Leadership Council that's going to go into finalizing that plan. And she has a couple more stakeholder groups to meet with. It's looking like a timeline for, by January, there will be a completion of a three-year plan, including goals and objectives. So I will continue to update you on that in the months ahead as that process gets going. And then finally, the governing board has completed their evaluation of Dr. Schneider and we'll be sharing that with him soon. The next Leadership Council meeting is June 14th at 7:00.
Thank you, Suzanne. Questions regarding NSSCD? Thank you. Legislative Liaison, Tom?
Nothing to report in that area right now.
Thank you. Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne.
The Spirit of 67 Foundation met this morning, so I do not have a report drafted as of yet. But the meeting was basically a celebration of the last two years. A large number of the current exec board and board members are moving on and a new fleet of people are coming on to that board, so it's a very exciting time. And there have been just a lot of positive things that have happened over the last two years. We also found out that the most recent home tour brought in net revenue of just over $60,000. It's looking like maybe 62. So that is a nice thing to add to our coffers and our donations for the year have hit a recent record high. So we're, the spirit's in a great place.
Questions for the Spirit? Thank you, Suzanne. APT Exec Board, Jeff?
The District 67 APT Exec Board held its annual incoming outgoing board luncheon on Wednesday, May 10th at Market House. It was well-attended and very successful. Members of the administration and the buildings, principals were all in attendance as well. A nice event, I won't go into detail. We've talked about who's coming and going, but again, thanks to the APT for all the hard work they do for our district. The next meeting will not be until the next school year. Right now, it's scheduled for September, Wednesday, September 13th here in the boardroom. Right now, it's scheduled for September, Wednesday, September 13th, here in the boardroom. That's it.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions regarding the APT? All right, we move on to our second public participation item. If there's a member of the public would like to address the board, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we move on to our action items. Our first action item. May I have a motion to accept the Hearing Officer's recommendation denying in part and granting in part the suspension appeal filed by student A. The superintendent will provide a letter to the parents of this student reflecting this determination as noted in closed session, effective date, May 16th, 2017. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Sheridan Water Retention Issue and Playground Bid in the amount of $313,500?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Discussion?
I think the only thing to note is that in this number that you're looking at, there will actually be a gift from the Spirit for the playground equipment that will actually reduce the eventual expense to the district by about $89,000.
And Jen, this number includes not only, you know, resurfacing of the playgrounds, but also the drainage and water retention issues that we need to address behind Sheridan School in order to do this work, correct?
Yes, about $100,000 of that total is directly related to the drainage issue.
Actually, a quick question. I'm confused on this. As far as the installation, that's included in this number?
This does not include the installation of equipment. We're still exploring some ideas on that. We could use our staff. We've also had the city offer some assistance in that area. And depending on the actual timing, we'll need to make a decision. So it does not include installation. This is for the construction and the equipment, not installation, and it does not count the Spirit's donation.
Thanks.
And so depending on how that, those different ideas and conversations play out, you may be coming back to the board for additional funds for the installation, depending on which way that all goes?
Yes.
Fair enough. Any other questions on this or comments? Okay, let's take a roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Chief Technology Officer delineating agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion?
Does, I mean, I'm not sure I'm the right person to talk about what a delineating agreement is versus an actual contract. But since this is a shared service position and the position is owned by District 115, they've already gone ahead and approved this position. Is that correct?
Correct, at their last meeting.
All right. So theoretically, they've hired this individual. Now, we need to approve an agreement to share in the cost equally in that individual's salary, correct?
I believe, yes, but I believe they actually also approve a delineating agreement. Because the delineating agreement is an agreement between both boards. So they hired him, they have a contract, and then they'll solidify that agreement.
So just out of curiosity, if we said no, is he still technically on board or what?
That'd be a really interesting question.
Are you daring me? This might be a test case. We have to try. I'm just kidding. But anyway, so what we're doing is essentially agreeing to pay the shared service aspect of the individual's salary.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please, Eileen.
Here's your chance. Mr. Fulker?
Hey! Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Board Delegated Change Order Authority?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments, discussion? I'll just say for the public, this is an attempt, as we're moving forward with the Haskins Project and the Vestibules, some large dollar items this summer. It gives the administration appropriate flexibility, in my opinion, to deal with change orders in an efficient way while still keeping the board informed and certainly giving us the opportunity to say something if we need to. So others may say that more eloquently.
I think it was well said.
Other questions or comments?
So just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, Jen, it says that for changes that are greater than $15,000 but less than $25,000, they can be authorized by Director of Buildings and Grounds, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services after consulting the superintendent, correct?
That is correct. And then there's a notification to the board. As we did that previously when we did construction, that was hitting just the next update to the board.
Okay. But then the total authority for changes approved by the administration cannot exceed 250. So that says theoretically, you could have $10,000, $15,000, $17,000, or $20,000 change orders that the board does not need to approve until you get to a $250 total. At that which point, anything beyond that needs to be? Whether it's a dollar or $1,000, needs to have board approval?
Correct. Where it is tied to is when you looked at your total project recommendation from last month, you had a 5% contingency, which is roughly $250,000. So even if we had a really unfortunate turn of bad luck and needed to use these change orders up to 250, you have already previously approved that as part of the total project. Anything above and beyond that, you have not.
As long as the change order itself does not exceed 25,000, correct?
It would come to the board for a vote.
And once we, so if we were to hit, I mean, hopefully, we do not, but if we were to hit that change order contingency maximum, does that mean literally anything that comes in, whether it's $5 or $1,000, would still need board approval at that stage of the game?
Or what we would do is we would ask for another recommendation, perhaps to increase the contingency if that were too much.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Teaching and Learning Coordinator one-year contract?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So Jen, what did Ms. Simmons do this year?
Someone might be able to answer this better than I am, but I believe she is a teaching and learning facilitator. I only, and she was on part of the teacher's contract with additional per diem days. But if you want to actually know specifically what she does, I'll have to defer to.
And so next year, she will not be on the teacher contract?
That's correct. This is an administrative contract with performance goals.
And so she can always go back to the teacher contract? Like this is a one-year contract?
This is a one-year contract. She is new to our district, so she does not have tenure status within either of the categories right now.
So in a sheet we saw earlier tonight about administration compensation, she will be added to that?
Yes.
Okay, so we were told some things are going to come off, but she's one person that's going to go on.
That's correct.
Okay. And is she doing her job from the current year, next year as well? Or is somebody else doing that?
Does somebody from the audience that knows what's going on want to answer these questions? Thank you.
I was seeing how long, how long you could handle it. So she, she will be taking some of her responsibilities forward, but also picking up other administrative responsibilities, chairing committees, and being able to lead more curriculum work than she can in her current position. Does that answer your question?
And so who are we hiring to replace her other stuff?
She will continue to do the bulk of that work, but we added, remember, we added two teaching and learning facilitators already that's been approved. So one of those adds is an inquiry and innovation teaching and learning facilitator. So we kind of doubled that. And then this is the next up.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Susan. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the amended 2017, 2018 school calendar?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments, questions, discussion?
So the change is moving the potential snow makeup day to Monday, April 2nd, is that correct? Is that an add or a change of a date that was already designated?
I asked the question today because I figured this would be the question. They had five snow days at the end, but now there's four snow days at the end, and then that snow day in April to make up. We have to have five snow days.
But I thought in the previous calendar, we had another holiday that had been designated as a potential makeup day. Or did we not?
No. So what had happened is when we submit the calendar to the ROE for review, we put the five snow days at the end and didn't report it as it should be, April 2nd being the first emergency with four at the end. So we have to resubmit to the ROE. ROE accepts it, then it comes back to the board to amend it. So we're just correcting a submission error to the ROE from the April 2nd.
Okay, just from a concern, I mean, I don't know that it's a big deal, but attaching this particular potential makeup day at the back end of spring break, nobody's going to plan for this. So people are going to make their vacations to be gone for that, coming home on that Monday for the most part, unless they want to be home for Easter.
Yeah, and I would have to take those kinds of factors.
Using it as a makeup day, you're probably going to get maybe 50% attendance as it is if we do end up having school that day. So ideally, it'd be nice to have another day, if we could, that you use for that potential snow makeup. Because I just don't think anyone's going to be backing down.
I will share that comment with the Calendar Committee. I just, it's an error I discovered when I was doing my work stuff, so.
Well, okay.
Other questions or comments? Roll call, please, Eileen.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the copier recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion on the copiers? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 6:30, Organization of Instruction?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion on Policy 6:30?
Want me to take that? This is merely just changing what we had already discussed around having the Organization of Instruction policy integrate the new pre-K program and say that our instructional levels are from pre-K through 8, as opposed to just K through 8.
And there's no changes since last month, first reading?
No.
That's why it's the second reading, right?
No.
Very good. Okay, I'm quick like that. Okay, any other questions? All right, we will have a roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 8:32, Meeting Protocols?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novit?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Items as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?